Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Illyria. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorangecity.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, then click on View Agenda.
Good morning, can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, Tim's gonna do it. Chaplain Vitaleman?
As we come to you today, Father, we thank you for so many things and we thank you for the Commissioners and their staff and as they make decisions and contemplate things for the betterment of Lorraine County, we thank you for that. We just thank you, Lord, that 2015 is going to be a great year for Lorraine County. Amen.
Amen.
Commissioner Williams?
Uh, Tim's gonna present the dog today.
Good morning, this is cage number 30, it's a five-year-old Beagle male. He was found on Pitts Boulevard in North Ridgeville. Uh, he was available for adoption on the 6th, so it's ready to go. Very nice dog. Um, and we have 27 dogs, uh, at the kennel right now. So come on over and take a look, thank you.
Thanks, Tim.
Thanks, Tim. Madam Clerk?
Do you want to do, where, go into the proclamations?
First, yes.
Okay. We have a proclamation today, uh, to proclaim November 15th as American Recycles Day.
Keith, you want to come up and I'll read the proclamation?
In the matter of proclaiming November 15th, 2014, as America Recycles Day in Lorraine County, Ohio, whereas each year Americans generate more than 250 million tons of municipal solid waste, that is more than 4.7 pounds per person per day. According to EPA, our nation has reached an overall recycling rate of 34.7 percent. Each year our national recycling rate saves energy equivalent of 229 million barrels of oil, saves the same amount of energy consumed by over 10 million US households in a year, avoids greenhouse gas emissions equivalent to removing more than 34 million cars from the road each year. Whereas the focus, the nation's attention, on the importance of recycling, businesses, industries, government agencies, nonprofit organizations, and individuals have joined together to celebrate America Recycles Day and are encouraging their friends, neighbors, and coworkers to learn more about recycling options in our community and commit to recycle more materials. Whereas participating in America Recycles Day 2014 is one way citizens can help raise awareness about the need to reduce waste by reusing, recycling, and buying recycled content products. Whereas Lorraine County Board of Commissioners can use this as an opportunity to spread the word about the excellent recycling programs that have been established, the growth of markets for recyclable materials, and the importance of buying recycled products. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Lorraine County, Ohio, that we hereby proclaim November 15th, 2014, as America Recycles Day in Lorraine County. Witness our signatures, Lorraine County Commissioners Ted Kayla, Lori Koski, and Tom Williams.
Keith?
Morning Commissioners. I bring you greetings from the Board of Trustees of Keep Lorraine County Beautiful. We have numerous things going on this week and have been already started. Our partner with the, partnership with the Metro Parks continues out to the, uh, La Grange Facility in Carlisle Visitors, uh, Visitor Center, 3rd through 21st, the calendar artwork is on display. Also, there's a drawing for a rain barrel there, and you can sign your pledge cards for American Recycles Day at that point in time at that location. We have other things going on with Metro Parks as well. On Saturday, November 15th, at Lakeview Park, they will be having a recycling drive for glass, plastic, paper, et cetera, the Parks District will. And on Saturday, November 22nd, the, my favorite place, there'll be a recycling drive going on at Miller's Nature Preserve at their park there that Metro Parks has. So that's just a few of the items we've got going on this week, and just go to the website to see the others. We have activities at Lorraine Community College and other places.
Thank you, Keith.
Good morning Commissioners.
Good morning.
Brandi Chanel, I'm the Community Outreach Coordinator for Lorraine County Solid Waste. We also did a pledge drive in the schools, um, where I sent, um, a pledge sheet to each school, and they gave that out to each teacher. And the teachers, um, had their students take the pledge for America Recycles Day, and they, um, sent them back in, and as an incentive to get the pledges back, we said that every teacher who returned their pledge sheet for their class would be entered into a drawing for a pizza party. So I have that with me today, if one of you would like to, uh, do the drawing. And, um, this teacher will receive a pizza party for her entire class or his entire class. And, um, the pizza party was sponsored by Bobo's Office Supply.
Oh, nice.
Commissioner Kokowski, you're always good at drawing those things.
I like to make people happy.
Yeah, you do.
But then I make all the people that didn't get it not happy. That's the problem.
That's wonderful.
Okay, what do we have here? Liberty Elementary, Ms. Kacherek and her, and Mrs. Hughes.
Okay.
North Ridgeville?
North Ridgeville?
Yeah.
Yep. Um, second grade.
Second grade. Um, my grandson Gavin is in kindergarten, and I would think he would be the one to say something to me about recycling, but he must have taught my granddaughter Ava, who's only three, and she said, she gave me this plastic, uh, jug, and she said, "Gigi, put this in the recycle bin." And I thought, she's three years old and she knows what a recycle bin is already, so what you're doing in the schools is definitely working and even, you know, they're passing it on to the next generation, so.
Well, see Gavin thinks you should already know that. The three-year-old just wants to make sure it's right.
Right, right, so, yeah.
We've got a little extra treat for you, your photo contest. She's about ready to bring it up online, and we announce the winners.
Yeah, if we can figure that out, I have it on a flash drive here. But we did a photo and caption contest, um, it was our first one that we've ever done, and Commissioner Kokowski and myself judged the entries. We were able to choose four winners. Um, the winners received a certificate of appreciation, a $25 gift card that was donated by Quality Blow Mold, and we're gonna have a poster made for each of the pictures to give to the students. Um, I brought a slideshow that has the four pictures.
You might want to mention, and one was so good, we thought they might have, uh, got it off the line or something.
Yeah.
Like, it was so good, so.
It was very good.
We had to, you had to verify that the student actually took the picture, so.
I did verify it. The student, um, did all of the work, uh, to set up the photo shoot, um, himself, and then did that in the teacher's classroom, so.
It wasn't, uh.
Very impressed.
Yeah, it was very good. Do you want to talk about the qualifications on how, what they had to do in order to enter the contest?
Um, it was open to any student in Lorraine County in grades kindergarten through 12, and we had four different age categories that we judged the contest in. They had to take the picture themselves, they could set up their own, um, photo shoot, or they could take pictures of their friends. Whatever they were doing, it had to demonstrate reducing, reusing, or recycling, one of the three Rs. Um, so each of the winners did do that, um, to, uh, to win this contest. Um, oh, something about, let's, for the, uh, the pledges that we just did, the pledge drive, we had a total of 2,368 pledges from 110 classrooms in Lorraine County.
It's great.
Wow, beautiful.
Under Resolutions Number One, Investments?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Appropriations?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Transfers?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
No advances, no repayments, requisitions?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Transfers?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
No advances, no repayments, requisitions?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Travel?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Bills?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
No advances, no repayments, requisitions?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Bills?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
I don't, is there personnel?
Uh, yeah, there is, uh, we'll discuss it under my business, so we can hold off on that. Mr. Cordes is representing the Board of Commissioners with the Secretary of Labor at Lorraine County Community College today in regards to workforce investment.
Approve and waive the reading of the Minnesota November, November 5th?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Community Development amend NSP 3 agreement with City of Illyria for the purpose of adjusting budgets to decrease $189.11 and the demolition activity and 80 cents in administration activity for a total not to exceed $711,803.39.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Under Job and Family advertise RFPs for child daycare provider licensing, training, and follow-up support program. Notice being adjourned on November 17th and 24th, and bid opening at 2:00 PM on December 8th.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Ennis?
I have no report this morning.
Commissioners' report.
Uh, Thursday, I attended my Community Corrections Board meeting over at Judge Morality's office, and one thing that's coming up, um, November 13th at 6:30 PM at Midview Middle School in Grafton, um, Addiction Awareness Night, and what they do, the departments construct what appears to be the bedroom of an average teenager, but amidst the clutter are more than 150 items that can actually be signals that a young person could be involved in risky, dangerous, and even illegal activity. Um, the presentation topics include substance abuse, violence, eating disorders, juvenile crime, technology, risky games and challenges. So if you're, have children in school, um, not a bad thing to, to attend. Only adults are invited, uh, so that way we're not giving kids that haven't thought of some of these things any ideas, so, uh, just for the adults for that one. Um, this past Friday, we met with the Emergency Management for the, uh, Emergency Notification System. We had the technical support guy come in and go through, uh, the different pages of the Emergency Notification System. Letters went out, hopefully we'll be getting response back soon, and memorandums of understanding signed by the various entities. Sunday, I went to Avon VFW Post for the dedication there. It was so packed, I couldn't even get in the, the parking lot. There were so many people, there was absolutely nowhere to park. Um, so I missed it, so I ended up going to see the movie Fury, which is, uh, based on a, a story from World War II, and it was a really, really good, good movie. In the spirit of Veterans Day, it was a, a good thing to go see, so, um, I think that's the end of my report.
Thank you. Uh, yeah, it was a busy week. I'd like to thank Dan Gilotti, uh, and the staff at Valor Home. We did a soft walkthrough with representatives from Lorraine County Solid Waste, Tiffany Barker and Mike Challander. It was just a nice seat coming all together, and they've got their paperwork filed. Hopefully they'll be taking residence by mid-December.
Nice.
Uh, people from the College Foundation were there. It was just a real nice overall overview, see how they're going to handle the influx of our homeless veterans.
Are there still rooms available to adopt a room?
I didn't ask. They said there'll always be fundraising, though.
Okay.
They'll never stop because the dollars actually provide the housing, but any of the extra benefits, they have to continue to fundraise, so.
Okay.
We'll keep getting notified of fundraisers.
Okay.
Uh, also, uh, I serve on United Way Committee Emergency Food and Shelter Board. We did our final allocations on the upcoming budget, and we'll be meeting with, uh, one more time to finish that up, so those go to the entities, Lorraine, Illyria Salvation Ar, Salvation Army, Neighborhood, Neighborhood Alliance, uh, the Oakland Community Services, there's an, entities who take care of food shortages, uh, shelter issues, and then Utilities, which is the subcommittee I serve on. Uh, we actually get some higher allocations this year, uh, which really helps in these times of need. Uh, Solid Waste Policy Committee met this week, uh, going over a couple of sections. Not many changes coming forward. Uh, we won't be meeting in December, but in January, hope to start wrapping that up to send it, uh, to the EPA for approval and for ratification by June of next year, we hope. Keith? He showed up at 10 o'clock and we were just wrapping up, so, and we were on a different floor, so.
Yeah, we moved on him, didn't we?
Yes.
Yeah, we, actually it's due in April, be ratified, so we have a short calendar again, uh, to get this thing back in, the EPA, and get it ratified. But I would say by midsummer, we should have ratification done, and also have the EPA approval on our desk, so.
Yeah.
Then we'll have a new plan, all right?
Hoping by June.
Yes, sir.
Thanks, Keith. Also, uh, upcoming, we've scheduled our, um, budget hearings for departments on November 18th, uh, starting at 9:30 in the morning. Our County Recorder Judy Nedwick will be here, then the County Prosecutor's Office and the Clerk of Courts. And then on November 25th, the following Tuesday, we'll have Dr. Evans, our Coroner, Sheriff Stomity, and the Court of Common Pleas with Judge Bellesky, and Tim will be the Court Administrator, uh, through discussions that our Budget Director Lisa Hobart has had. Uh, the Board of Elections will have no hearing because they've requested less than last year. Uh, Domestic Relations, Judge Burrows and Administrator Barilla, they cut their budget by $90,000 in their ass. Judge Walther from Probate Court is staying par. And then County Treasurer Tellerick and County Auditor Snodgrass only took the normal benefit increases, so no increase to their budget. Uh, we'll have discussions, though, in regards to Soil and Water, OSU Extension, Board of Revisions, and Tax Map. We have to finish up the Veterans Budget. Nice to see Terry Stone here, Director, and Sam Batunis. Uh, and some preliminary numbers I picked up this morning from Lisa, just going over its minimal increases, so, uh, hopefully we can do some things that we need to do. I've got to speak to Judge Walther yet in regards to what we have with the Green Acres money and helping that to fund the OSU Extension, the benefit for H. There might be a shortfall there that may need to be picked up by the general fund. And it's gonna be busy for the next three or four weeks. End of my report. Commissioner Williams?
Yeah, Amherst High School, they're gonna be having a play going on. Uh, my daughter's in it, or not actually in the play, but behind the scenes, so I want to give a promotion on that. Uh, starts on Thursday, this Thursday, tomorrow, but Saturday evening, and then Friday and Saturday of next week at 7:00 at Amherst Steel High School. Um, and, uh, looking forward to basketball season, starting for my son, and, uh, getting out there and, uh, getting, uh, ready to coach soccer as well as indoor league starts. End of my report.
Commissioner Williams' question, he said, "I know you have another, do you have time for a 10 or 15-minute executive session this week?"
Actually, I need to be somewhere at 10:00, so I got.
Do it next week?
Um, I will be here next week. I will be over at the courthouse. Um, I've been asked to attend a court hearing, um, in regards to the breach of contract at the City of Lorraine, uh, done with the Board of Commissioners and also the Hidden Valley residents.
Sure, the 1976 agreement.
Yeah.
Okay, well, the next couple of weeks, you think we can wrap these things up that we've had discussions?
Yeah.
Through the year?
Okay.
Thank you. No executive at this time.
Okay.
Before, um, I, they had the list of delinquent real estate taxes in the paper, and, um, I was looking at mostly the bigger ones, which a lot of them had to do with Columbia Gas, surprisingly, uh, lots, lot of money, outstanding. Um, I did call Snodgrass, Auditor Snodgrass, up to ask him, um, about it, and he said there's a possibility that they may be appealing their values, and it wouldn't go through the, uh, Board of Revision here, that they would take it to the state, so, um, I had a few calls about that, so I just wanted to let people know that they are aware and doing what we can to hopefully get those delinquent taxes paid up.
Well, in just a little bit of experience, having learned some utilities recently, like in regards to Avon Lake Plant.
Yeah.
They have a portion down there.
Why that didn't go to Avon, or to the state?
Well, it came through us, passed around one part of it, but utilities have a PUCO tax that they can have lower than, there is no ability for the local jurisdictions to contest it. So Columbia Gas may be going through that process first, so.
So I'm hoping that's what the prob, the issue is, and that will be resolved, and we need all their tax money.
Clean it all up.
Yeah.
Our schools could use it.
That's for sure.
Madam Clerk?
Board of Correspondents?
Move the reading be waived?
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Public comment?
Sam, any comments today, or see you and Terry here, or go wait through the budget hearings next week, or?
We have a budget hearing next week.
Well, we don't, we've already had yours, but you're here and we've been talking, and so. You've never been shy around a microphone.
This is a wonderful insert, Sam.
Thank you. An attempt to make people realize what the Recycles Day stems from.
Well, Sam actually served.
We should do that for Memorial Day also, because it's not Memorial Day. Uh, several day, a short time ago, we sent the Commissioners and, uh, your Administrator a letter with a rather pertinent request. Um, we have not heard anything in regards to that request. The Commissioners have not heard anything about the budget. We do have some concerns as to what the delay is. We've been delaying this for quite a while.
About three years.
At least three years.
Correct.
I can go remember when they used to have the Veteran Service housed in the little brick building next to this building at one time.
Before it was demoed.
Yeah, before they tore it down. So I, that is basically the reason for being here. We need to move forward on it. The, uh, property we talked about in that letter, uh, has, uh, picked up several additional inquiries. Uh, we need to move forward, uh, and get this resolved. We're not asking really for anything unreasonable, considering the condition that our people have had to operate it under, and the condition our veterans have been exposed to while talking about their problems.
Well, hope to wrap this up by the end of the year.
Yeah.
By the end of the year.
Yep, well, through the budget process, yep.
And we're having a budget meeting next week?
No, you guys are not. You don't have to. We had your budget hearing made per code.
Yeah, you're not gonna have another hearing, but we're gonna have budget hearings for the rest of the departments who asked for increases.
Okay.
Yeah. You've been held off long enough. I mean, we've had a lot of.
I agree 100% with you, Commissioner.
Circumstances, we, we're not, you know, we didn't do that, you know, to be disrespectful, just there's been so many, you know, outstanding things going on that sometimes.
I, I, yeah, I can understand and accept the fact that you didn't do it to be disrespectful. However, I think we all need to understand that perception is reality.
And you've been very patient.
And perception among the veterans' community is that we're being hosed.
No, absolutely not.
That perception exists.
Well, I hope you don't feel that way.
So we need to address that. So, Commissioners, Jerry, thank you.
Thank you, Sam.
Mr. Stone?
And thank you for your service, too.
Good morning, everybody. Um, just wanted to reiterate on what's.
introduce yourself, Terry.
Uh, Terry Stone, I'm the Executive Director of Lorraine County Veterans Service Commission. Um, just to reiterate on what Sam said, we've been tossing this idea of relocating our offices around for quite a while. Um, it, it's, you know, nice to have a, a place to do business that's not only accessible to all veterans, but accessible at the hours, too, to where we can expand our services. One of the reasons we want to look at a standalone, independent building. Right now, 4:30, um, 4:35, if I'm still sitting there trying to finish something up on my computer, they're wanting to close the building, lock it up. It's not our building. Uh, my intent is, with a, a different location where we have, uh, control over our hours, is to start offering, uh, at least one or two days a week of evening hours for those veterans that work during the day and just can't afford to take a day off work to come and talk to us about their benefits. Also, the ability to be able to do, uh, different things on Saturday, as far as, uh, career fairs, uh, health fairs, uh, things like that that will help the veterans of Lorraine County. We can't do that right now. Uh, so the evening hours, the outreach, the, the Saturday events, uh, anything we can do to expand our services, to help the veterans of Lorraine County, is the intent of moving our location where we have more control over that. Um, just to report, too, we, uh, did receive our handicap accessible van that we purchased, and within the first three weeks of us getting it, we already transported nine wheelchair veterans to their Lorraine VA appointments, which takes a load off of our bill to provide a ride. Uh, it, it's grown exceptionally, and we don't even have the plates on it or the lettering yet, so. The word got out there.
Yeah.
Um, as you see in our, our flyer there, we sponsored the, uh, the insert in the Chronicle Telegram. We've been, uh, expanding our advertising and outreach.
I heard you on WGar the other day.
I, I'm on everywhere. But that's part of getting the, the word out to the veterans in the county, you know, not just particular cities, but, but the whole county, you know? And, and we do get calls from outside the county requesting our help, which unfortunately we can't help outside the county, but that's part of advertising. It reaches out farther than what a lot of people realize with the Senior Years Magazine, the DD214 Magazine, all the advertising we do in the paper. And just a note, this Friday, uh, we are sponsoring with iHeartRadio, uh, Show Your Stripes Comedy Event at Quaker Steak and Lube in Sheffield from 8:00 to 10:00. Admission is free for veterans, $5 or three non-perishable food items. Um, for non-veterans to get into the comedy show, all those proceeds are going to the Second Harvest Food Bank here in Lorraine County, so.
Great.
Thank you very much for your time, and, uh, any questions you have out of our office Thank you very much for your time, and any questions you have out of our office or any concerns, please give me a call.
Thank you so much.
Well, you know, with the expansion of the services and changing the office hours and even going through and getting it where the system's not cutting off, that can be done just by making decisions up here in order to control that facility. I don't think you need to go through and actually have a standalone system in order to get that, and just basically making the changes at Job and Family Services, so. And then also going through and taking a look at, doing the renovations. From what I've been told, I don't have the sheet in front of me, so I don't know if the numbers are accurate, but you're looking at spending, you know, a million dollars plus to go through and get a standalone system, or standalone building versus going through and doing renovations, which you probably could have completely done and done in a nice decor for probably under two-hundred thousand.
We, we haven't seen any plans or ideas on that, so that's the reason for, you know, getting the conversation started and sitting down and talking about what's, what's the way we can go and what's the best, best way to do this stuff, so. That's, that's all we want to do, is start, start the conversation.
Okay.
And get together as a group and figure out the best thing. I'm sorry. I'll, I'll further Mike over to Sam.
No, I'd just like to respond to Commissioner Williams. I think the commissioners at the present location have designated two, at most three, handicap parking sites for veterans or reserved for veterans. Most of our veterans' clients are World War Two, Korea veterans. Many of them can barely walk from here to that door without assistance. Just as Commissioner Kowski had trouble parking at the VFW, they experienced a great deal of difficulty parking out there and walking to the building, particularly when that parking lot is not in the best of shape. You know, it takes, it's gonna take a little bit more than paint and curtains or whatever you contemplate putting up at Health and Human Services or what, Jobs and Family, whatever.
Well, it wouldn't be curtains.
No, I don't want to debate it. I'm just telling you. You do have problems getting veterans in and out of that building.
I'm just stating that instead of spending a million dollars, you have a government facility that's there. You could do the renovations, and you talk about the parking lot, that would be standard maintenance that would be done on the parking lot, again. To go through and create another standalone building, you're gonna be costing the county additional funds as far as doing the maintenance of that building as well. Lorraine County, they have too many buildings already.
We are not contemplating expending any funds that are not authorized for use by County Veteran Services under fifty-nine oh-one. And as you recall, I met with you at Health and Human Services probably two years ago.
Actually, it was two thousand and eleven. We looked at it.
Yeah. And we went through it, and you proposed a whole series of changes at that time, none